We have areas where it's in units. Or dense apartments in the middle of the neighborhood. And even on the border here, do we have any estimate as to what that mapping would be? How many units per acre in the more, I should say, the less dense part of Carpenter Village? What that would map to, is that like medium density in Mooresville zoning?
Without knowing what like the lot sizes are, I'm not sure. But based on the use of going out to single family detached, it would probably have to be either medium or low density.
Chairman, I do need to correct myself. There's actually only 128 apartment units. I misread that line as well.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have that in the sheet. I would have, I can get that information.
Yeah, there are quick comments.
I do want to point out, as far as some of these comparisons, when you have a mixed use development like Grace Park that's residential and commercial, looking just at the residential density might not necessarily capture what you feel on the ground because there are other buildings there too.
Could you go back to this slide where you had the underground cabling clause in there? If my recollection is correct, what we agreed to on that one was the underground cabling will still be required. And if, for whatever reason, that is not feasible, the builder will come to, back to the board with a proposal of how they would achieve it. And the payment in lieu is really the last resort, not necessarily the second option.
So in the, right, so the text amendment that you saw last time, that it's working its way through, that would be a new process to give a development that option. And in this case, they're asking that those options kind of be built into the rezoning so that it wouldn't need to have another application in the future and that the process could be more streamlined.
I think Sanjay's point was that it should favor more having the utility lines put underground and only as a last resort. Would you go to the?
That's right. So what I was really trying to get to is a statement in there which kind of says, "Right-of-way shall be buried underground." And then you have a or statement, right? Which kind of, if I was in the builder's shoes, I'll take the easy way out.
Right, so rather than-
Take the money and get out.
Being hierarchical and say, "This is the first option," and then only move on to the next option and then the next option.
I mean, I wouldn't even put payment in lieu as something in there. I mean, they can always come back and seek a request for, you know, basically paying in lieu without having, you know. I want them to try, work it out with you before we even consider the option of payment in lieu.
That was a suggested condition that the applicant agreed to. So there would be some more negotiation if that were possible.
Right.
Maybe that's a good opportunity to ask the applicant to come forward.
And as the applicant comes to the podium, I did kind of a quick sketch to see what Grace Park is. And just the Grace Park component, that includes the retail on the bottom, the apartment on top, the condos and the townhomes, that's approximately 24 acres. I did not include the original portion. That's really not part of the mixed use with the Starbucks, the gas station, the animal hospital, Goodwill. So 24 acres approximately.
Good afternoon.
Name and address for the record.
Yeah, that's right. Carter Siegel, 2147 Roswell Avenue, Charlotte, North Carolina. I work for Wood Partners, who is the applicant in this case. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I put together a couple of slides to, I think, better present some of the changes that have taken place, really from the day that we started discussing with the town. And more specifically about some of the changes to take into account the feedback we heard from the neighborhood as well as you all last time we were here. So this is a site plan of, this is where we started. This was a plan that was developed in fall of last year. This plan was originally conceived to have a little over 300 units. As you can see from the plan, we were contemplating or planning to use the southern half of the site to put kind of a separate building there. As often is the case as we go through the rezoning process, there's a lot of back and forth. The plans are always changing. We're trying to do as best we can to accommodate many different requests coming from different directions, either be a neighbor request, the town of Cary or Mooresville, DOT, other municipalities, other critical partners. What we determined through going through the plan, we wanted to save that southern half of the request from Cary to dedicate some land for the greenway. And so that building, as we went through many different iterations, and I would add, there probably have been 12 different iterations as we get to where we are today, which is this plan, which we submitted. Again, the feedback we heard loud and clear is that the original concept, while accommodating some request in that pulling our density back up to the intersection of Mooresville Carpenter and Davis was our intent to try to save as much green space in the southern half of the site. That met with opposition and now we have buildings that have too much height and mass. And so we heard that from the neighborhood and we heard that from the board last time. And so what we did is we went back, we engaged our architect and our site planner, and we made accommodations to the building, the frontage along Mooresville Carpenter, which were four-story buildings. We pushed that height down to three stories. And the backside of building, so it's a 25% reduction in building height and mass along Mooresville Carpenter and Buildings A and B as illustrated. There was additional concern about the backside of Building A that was originally conceived as a 4-5 split. And so we reduced that backside to four stories. That's about a 20% reduction on that building. Where we made up for that density is we made Building C, which was previously contemplated to be a four-story building across, that's now a 4-5 split. And so I should add, these aren't easy things to do. They're easy to do on paper to draw. There's fairly meaningful cost associated with making those accommodations. We now have ported in place retaining walls inside the buildings to accommodate these breaks. But again, it was an important point that came up in neighborhood meetings as well as during the staff meetings, so the board meeting, excuse me. So we've been able to do that and I'd like to, I think the plan still works well that way. The overall unit count, we're limiting that to 290, as we mentioned before. And we're able to do this by still preserving a fair amount of green space on the southern and western side of the property. So that's the updated plan. The other thing we wanted to do, it's hard to understand, to visualize, how this plan is going to take shape, knowing that the neighbors to the west have justifiable concerns about the development that we're proposing. And so we asked our architect to come through and do a couple of different kind of section studies to see what those elevations would look like from the neighborhood to the left, to the west, and our buildings to the east. And so this is a representative illustration. Now, these buildings are clearly just massing. The elevations are correct in scale. And the finished elevations or grades are roughly correct from a representative standpoint. This is still two-dimensional, so it's not an active. But it is representative to finished grades, spot grades, from the neighbors to the west and where our finished grades are going to be to the building to the east. And so what this shows is that, so if we go back, I'll toggle back and forth so it's a little easier to understand. The top image is image number two. So we tried to take a look at the back of that residential building and where that cross-section of building, I guess we'll call that Building Two in this illustration. And so while it is a four-story building in the back, there is a meaningful separation and there will be a meaningful number of trees that will not be, that will be saved and won't be disturbed during the development. One of the concerns was, well, you know, the people in the balcony is going to be looking down into neighbors' backyards. And so I wanted to, as best we can, represent what that relative relationship would look like. Again, using grades GAS provided, we didn't go out and topo this. This is government or GIS topo. Excuse me. And then the illustration on the bottom half is building number one in this illustration. And so the grades that are shown here are existing grades. What we've tried to do, again, these buildings haven't been designed and we're still shaping the ball of clay, so to speak. What we've done here is represent what the finished grades, proposed finished grades are going to be of these buildings. So as I mentioned in our last meeting, the site steps away. What I've come to learn in speaking with our civil engineers, it naturally falls away. When we get into develop the site, we're going to be pushing that grade down even further as we take the hill and essentially cut the hill and push the hill down. And so we're going to be taking the existing grade and pushing those grades down further. And what this illustration on the bottom, I use my mouse. Maybe I can use this as my cursor to help illustrate. And so the finished grade here is actually going to be lower than it is today. And so the representation, what ends up happening here at the tightest point between the residential home and our proposed building, the first floor will actually be below grade or below the finished floor of that existing home. Now, these aren't, this isn't perfect. There's going to be some plus or minus, but this is representative. It isn't that we're way up on a hill looking down on the neighborhood next door. It's relatively similar. In fact, the finished grades, as we step these buildings down the hill, will push those building heights down. So this is a four-story building, but from the neighbors, it will feel, you know, more like a three-story from their perspective. The other concern, so that deals with the site plan and density enassing. The other concern we heard was concern about traffic impact of the development. Kim Lee Horn has done a traffic impact analysis we submitted to the town in looking at both AM and PM peak hours. To explain this graph, the blue is what's there today. And the pink or fuchsia is the existing, what the impact of our property will have on the intersection of Mooresville Carpenter and Davis Drive. This isn't our math. This is the calculation based on the town of Mooresville's traffic guidance. And so we simply just plugged in the numbers and this is the output. So it's a very slight impact to both peak AM and peak PM traffic at that intersection. So we're not impacting, we have a slight impact. There is an impact. I'm not saying there's not an impact. There'll always be an impact, but it's not as dramatic as it may appear. The other thing I wanted to point out graphically, and we discussed this in our last presentation, but it didn't have an image to speak to. There was a lot of concern about how our traffic, where that traffic was going to go and what were the improvements, what improvements we were putting in and where those were going. And so there was some concern that all of our traffic is going to be dumping on Mooresville Carpenter Road. And I wanted to dispel that a bit. Our main entrance will be on the far left of this plan, but we also have a right-in, right-out. And critically, there will be a drive or an access point through the CVS accessing Davis Drive here. And so we'll have three points of permanent ingress egress in and out of the site. So that should help to alleviate the flow of traffic. And then the other question was, what we heard was, you know, this is an important corner, a gateway to Mooresville. We don't, again, we haven't designed the project as yet. I asked our architects, we're using client design, we're based in Raleigh, to help put together kind of a density or massing study. So I should, this is, again, I put it up here, illustrate, this is an illustrative rendering of what the project could look like. We haven't gotten as far enough along to pick the architectural style as yet. But this is, it gives us a fair representation of the mass, you know, the building along Mooresville Carpenter. This would be the curb cut. So these are three-story buildings, again, along Mooresville Carpenter Road. They stepped down to four in the back. But this gives a sense for what the, of what the project could look like. But it is a representative image to get a feel for the height of that building there. And then I wanted to also add a couple of buildings that we've recently built to give everyone a sense of the style and quality of the projects we build. This community is based in Virginia. This is a project we're building right now. It's a three-story building. It's a little bit more similar to the elevation along Mooresville Carpenter Road. And then just to conclude, the site today obviously is not at its highest and best use. We feel that a request for Neighborhood Activity Center is a consistent zoning, would be consistent with the other three corners, which were already zoned that way. And so our request, we think, is consistent with the area multifamily. It's typically an appropriate use as you transition from single-family to more dense commercial. At stabilization, the project, while we won't have any homeowners here, the community will be generating close to a half a million dollars in annual property taxes once stabilized. Three-story elevation along Mooresville Carpenter, as I mentioned, is appropriate density and consistent with the multifamily across the street. And we feel it might be an appropriate or an attractive entrance to the town of Mooresville. So I'll stop there. If there are any questions, that's the summary of kind of-
Thank you, Mr. Siegel.
Where we are and where we are.
Catherine, any questions?
I do not believe so.
Actually, I had one more slide. I'm sorry, I forgot. There was, to address, sorry to- The question, school impacts, we do get this a lot and it's a valid concern. You know, when you're developing a fairly dense residential community, that's an immediate assumption that there'll be many children that'll go along with those properties. What we found is historically that it's not as dramatic as it may appear. This is data that we pulled together from NMHC, National Multihousing Council. This is information across a national survey. This takes into account Class C, B, and A properties, townhomes, every type of multifamily category. We're in a very small slice of that category. But it shows that almost 80% of the units that are delivered across the country within the U.S. Department Housing Stock, only about 80% of those have no children. What we did is then looked at our particular demographics within our portfolio. We're a national company. We have about 18,000 units around the country. And we've looked at all of our internal data, which we capture with the R D accounting. And our current minor population, as it states here, is about 3.5% of all units. So it's a much, in reality, it's much, there are much fewer children in our properties than there are even in the overall apartment industry. In fact, I called one of our property managers. He just, we have a property in Richmond, Virginia, which is very similar in scale and size and demographics. It's actually 100% occupied and we have 12 children there. It's about 300 units. There are eight units that have divorced families. And so they have eight children who are there, you know, temporarily. But there are 12 children in that property. So it's-
I'm sorry, but it's an opportunity for this gentleman to speak and we don't recognize people from the audience. I'm sorry. We've been very tolerant and allowing the public address to be used as a public comment session, but I'm sorry, we're not going to open it up to a general forum here.
Well, I don't mean to, I just use as an example. I'm sorry. I mean, this is, it's much fewer than it generally conceived. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Please, do you have any questions for Mr. Siegel?
Can you go back to the drawing that shows your buffers and everything?
Yep.
The one before that. Well, so I guess my question is, how many trees are going to be, maybe you've got, this is a little different than what was in the application packet and it shows a lot more of the existing.
Yeah, so that's a good point. So it's the same, it's the same area disturbance. The other package was all green.
Right.
And so we couldn't, I couldn't show what trees were going to be saved versus where the impact of disturbance was going to be for the site. And so this is, again, this is not, this is not 100% accurate, but this is a pretty close representation of where the boundaries of the site disturbance is going to be.
All right, so your areas that are shaded green will be disturbed.
Yes.
It'll have some plantings back, which looked like there was maybe on the other drawing.
That's right.
Potentially in there, some understory, lower level plants or whatever.
Yep.
And then, so you're leaving the trees that are in that area there.
So the dark green, there's a difference between the light green and the dark green. So the dark green is impervious and this will come back in with landscaping and trees that will be added and sod and grass and whatnot. And the light green is impervious. So there'll be a swimming pool here and there'll be some degree of hardscape as well as soft.
Potentially, that green that's down by, like where the section one goes through.
Right through here.
Would that be similar to the area below where they've cleared out in Carpenter Village and is now just planted grass area? Is that what you're, with some trees in that? Is that what you're talking about?
We have a requirement to plant a buffer along here. And so there will be plantings and trees that'll go in there. It won't be, there's a fair amount of, so we'll grade it and then there'll be a fair amount of slope still. So the plan is to then plant that with shrubs and trees.
If you go to the section drawing, the next drawing.
Yep.
So the little smaller trees, I guess, kind of closer to the buildings, is that the area that you're talking about planting?
Yeah, this didn't show up very well. I didn't know how to represent that. But yes, in this area here, this is the buffer that we have to, that we're required to plant. And so there are trees that'll go along that buffer.
But the tall trees there are the ones that will be-
Trying to represent the trees that will stay. That's right. As best we can. It may not be, it's probably not 100% accurate, but they're, yeah.
That's my main question.
Excellent. Tim?
Sure. You're showing an access road to Davis Drive.
Yes.
Has something changed since the last, my understanding was that that was not agreed and that was potential access that was contingent on a variety of factors? Has something changed to make that guaranteed?
There hasn't, there hasn't, nothing's changed. They're either, it's going to, the road, as I understand, is going to happen. It's a matter of how it's going to be funded. Either we're paying for it during the construction of our project or we're paying $100,000 as a payment in lieu to make, for the town of Mooresville to make that connection.
Carrie, do you want to comment on that?
So as we mentioned last meeting, CVS as the adjacent property, as part of their original site plan approval, there was a condition stating that they would be required to provide access to the property to the west of it, which is this property, and the property to the south of it, which is the Luder property. And I think the intention was that it would happen at some point in the future when it would make sense to do so, like when those properties developed. So to date, that has not happened. Since then, we have sent the notices of violation because now it is really time for them to comply with that. And so the intention is, as Carter mentioned, that during this process, that there could be some coordination between all of the properties so that it could be developed at that time. It could be constructed at that time. And if the timing does not necessarily work for that coordination and construction to happen when this project is under construction, then a payment in lieu fee would be provided so that in the future, that that would help facilitate that future connection by having the funding there to do so.
Second question then, if you go back to the traffic analysis piece.
Yep.
Looking at that pink bar.
Yep.
Is that based on, maybe talk a bit about how that was arrived, how that calculation was arrived? So is that based on all traffic going through that junction during the course of the day? And this is looking at a acute point or an overall point?
Can I ask my engineer to answer that question?
Good evening, Earl Luell and Kim Lee Horn, Traffic Engineer. The blue bar represents traffic that would be there without this project. It's the total intersecting volume, all cars going through the intersection from all approaches. Same thing for the pink. That's the amount of traffic going through that is site-related, site-generated traffic.
Has there been a similar study done that looks at point of origin traffic? Or, so I get throughput traffic. So if you take the traffic en masse that's going through that pipeline and then you're adding a little bit that goes through it, that makes sense to me. But if you look at the number of cars that are entering that zone from the various four points and what this does, does that change the picture and to what degree?
I would have to say it would impact traffic from the, I'd want to say, eastbound approach more so than others because that's the origin. I think that's maybe where you're headed.
That's where I'm going. So we have four corners there and you would figure traffic is going to emanate from each of those four corners based on where the starting point is.
Right.
We're adding, it looks like that one side has 100 or roughly 200 units. We're going to add 290 units. Does that go up by that amount? I'm just thinking, point of origin traffic as opposed to throughput traffic.
Not sure I'm following.
There's going to be 290 new units going into this place. Those folks will enter that roadway, so that many that wasn't there before. Is there a difference between overall throughput throughout the day and point of origin traffic? Where from coming in from one of the corners? That's, I think that's what folks are concerned about is the traffic that emanates right from that point and starts there versus coming down the pike.
Still not sure. I completely-
And I can't answer your question in complete specifics, but we did, and Cary had provided you in the packet some information about, you know, we looked at the crash history of that area. And so as part of that, I did look at DOT, what they call average annual daily traffic numbers for that intersection area. So from those numbers, I can say, based on the counts that DOT has done in the past, there is significantly less traffic on Mooresville Carpenter Road, on either section of Mooresville Carpenter Road than on Davis. Davis Drive, there's around 30,000 to 40,000 cars a day on Davis Drive alone. Actually, I think it's 28,000 on the south end and maybe 31,000 on the north end. And then on Mooresville Carpenter Road, on the west side of Davis is somewhere between 10,000 and 15,000 or so, from what I can tell from the DOT reports. And on the west side of Davis, it goes up to about 14,000 to 18,000. Closer to Town Hall Drive, we, as a town, have done traffic counts in the past where we've gotten closer to 18,000 to 20,000. But at least at that intersection, based on the DOT data, which is the best we have, there's about 5,000 to 10,000 more vehicles on Davis than there are on Mooresville Carpenter Road.
I'm sorry, but this meeting can easily get out of control if we keep having interjections from the audience. I'm sorry, but we've been fairly tolerant so far. So if I could summarize your point, Tim, if we were to take those two columns that we see on this chart and we just looked at the east-west traffic, then the pink part, of course, would be a much greater percentage of the overall. So we're impacting east-west a lot more than we are the Davis Drive traffic, which comes from Fuquay and Holly Springs and Apex and Cary. Is that reasonable?
And I would agree with that. I would also add that it's difficult to do the type of average- I would also add that it's difficult to do the type of average daily traffic assessment while those volumes are available. That's two-way traffic and so until you know where those turns are going, it's not as telling as looking at the actual intersection turning movements. Two different ways of, of looking at it. Yeah.
Catherine, did you want to go back again?
I just have one short question about the traffic impact. Did you consider proposed development in Morris, within Carpenter Village and then across the way, across Morrisville Carpenter?
We included specifically the approved Twin Lakes Commercial Project, the Wegmans Project and associated. We included Feral Farms specifically, traffic directly from their traffic studies. Also included an annual 2% growth rate overall to account for other developments in and around the area at the request of DOT and.
Yes.
The town.
Thank you.
And I think there's the Franklin Development, which is part of Carpenter Village. There's another set of apartments and condominiums that are being built in Carpenter Village itself.
I, I think that was mentioned and I think the issue is there was no specific traffic study for that portion and it was deemed that the 2% growth rate would handle that. Is that correct?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Siegel over the traffic engineer?
So, the barrier is, I'll have a question for you two, sir, in a minute. The barrier between the proposed development and Carpenter Village shows trees. Is there going to be a fence or anything like that there?
So, in the Class C, as I understand, there's any requirements, in the Class C buffer, we would have an option of creating a, I think it's a 15-foot buffer with fence. They would have a six-foot tall wood screen fence that would go there or 20 feet, a 20-foot buffer without the fence. And either, I think in both cases, there's, I may get this wrong, there's landscaping maybe more or less, depending on which option you select. But, so we haven't, we haven't gotten that far, but there, that's, that's an, and either or, I think.
And the access to Davis, I don't know which one of you would want to.
Yep.
I understood there were topographical issues as well as the whole easement thing with CBS about putting through a road through to Davis. I understood there were topographical issues also that couldn't, that precluded that road, that connection.
I think for the access on Davis through the southern part of the property, there's some number of challenges related to topography and streams and wetlands and floodplain, but I don't think topography is as much of an issue up here to try to make the CBS connection. I think there are still some grade changes, but I don't believe they're quite as severe.
And as far as traffic turning into the main entrance, because that's full access on the main entrance, correct? Have you figured out how much clogging that's going to be? People trying to turn left across Morrisville Carpenter into the development and the traffic behind it getting piled up?
Yeah, excellent point. As part of our improvements, it's a little difficult to see on the screen, but shown in the gold color shows the improvements, the additional pavement, if you will, that will be added. And part of that is a left turn lane on Morrisville Carpenter into the site so that folks making left turns into the project will not impede through traffic. We did analyze the intersection and we did not see any backups coming out of the project in either peak greater than two to three vehicles max. DOT has reviewed this information as well as town staff and their consultant and concurred.
And then this is just sort of a general observation, but I have personally had an impression of haste. For instance, last month, the Friday before our planning and zoning board was when we got the materials regarding this development. And at that point, we found out this had been cooking for about three years. And then to find out from the speaker tonight that they had 48 hours notice in the neighborhood to rally, make comments, whatever, I just have a general impression of haste. And I wondered if you had a response to that, if there's a timeline and agenda here that we should know about.
Yeah, no, I could, I can address that. We have been working on this for the better part of three years, but we, but we've been following along with the town's process. We've met with staff many, many times. I don't control when the package gets to your inbox, but I think we submitted everything on time. And as far as the beginning from the neighbors, that, that would be on me. It wasn't, it's not a requirement, I understood, to get, to have a neighborhood meeting. My partner's on maternity leave and I took over the, the case on a kind of hands-on basis. And, and we hadn't had one, so I wanted to have one quickly. So, there was some, I will apologize, it wasn't enough, enough heads up for that meeting. But again, that was a voluntary meeting. I would throw that out. It's not something we're required to do, but we did want to have a meeting. We did want to get it out there as best we could before we came here, so.
Thank you.
Rob?
Any further questions? Just general comment. I'm glad to see the elevation changes put into the, into the presentation of our comments last time. Looking at the overall, the overall map of the intersection, still feel like it fits the NAC designation of, of that, of the four quadrants there. I do also, I think I even mentioned last time, I think one of the sore spots here is that it's, it's NAC, but it's shoved into half of the plot, right? And so, it's more dense in one spot than, than, than I think we would, you know, prefer to have in some ways, but at, at the same time, we're, we're also preserving the green space on the south. And, and that leaves us to some other opportunities down the road, I think, better that, that area using that green space, whether it be greenways or whatnot. I'm assuming at this point, I think we've kind of touched on it, that, that access on the Davis Drive side is a, is a, is a requirement, is a must-have and it's definitely going to happen. I mean, is that, is that the, is that the final answer there? It's not negotiable at this point. It's definitely going to happen. It's just a matter of at what timeline and who's paying upfront or.
Ultimately, it will require CVS's cooperation because it is their property and so we can't, either the town or the developer can't go on there and build it, of course, without their permission. And so, that is one piece that would have to be there that so far we're still working on, but it hasn't been resolved yet.
And is there a legal precedent to, to go after that, other than just the penalties and fees? If they're accept, if they want to accept a daily penalty, is that in perpetuity or?
Yeah.
So, at this point, they've received, last check, they're a little shy of $7,000. They're being fined every single day for non-compliance with their site plan approval. We have also permanently put on holds that they cannot receive any permits. So, if they need a HVAC goes out this summer, it's a little hot in there, they cannot pull a permit to change it out. So, they have to resolve their site plan violation and will continue going after them. I've emailed the attorney. I have placed phone calls to the attorney, but no phone calls, our emails have been returned.
Okay. And then the payment in lieu, if that was going to be the temporary result of this, is there a guarantee that those funds would get used for this road at a later date as soon as that date is available? Or has that become a budgeting issue later on?
We would have to then work with both property owners and there may be some responsibility then that starts to fall into the town to actually conduct the work. The goal is to have it resolved as soon as possible. In honesty, this can take 16 months, the route that I'm doing, you know? So, they do, usually when a sign gets plowed down and they want a new sign or literally HVAC goes out, suddenly they're willing to talk, but it's taken over a year sometimes for it to get resolved.
And I guess that, that is a big concern of mine, because it's never going to be less expensive and easier to do than it would be now. I mean, I'll be honest, like the whole white tech thing we just lived through, I, I'm a little sort of tired of all these improvements, like coming at the very end of a project. It would be nice, and, and this could potentially be beyond the end of the project. That is concerning. I mean, if it was to be approved and then we didn't get this access.
That is correct. It could be multiple years after a project's finished.
And just as a reminder, that's not the only cross-quired or is part of one of the conditions. There's also the cross-access to the Luter property with that full connection being made some date in the future.
That's Rob?
That's all. Thank you.
Sanjay?
I had, yeah, Lee, Tim and Arlene, you know, stole my thunder. They asked most of the questions I had, but, but I do have a couple that, that might help here is, you know, you mentioned, if you go back to the previous chart, or let's, let's do the, this chart first and then I'll come and ask the other question. I'm not a big fan of payment in lieu. I, I mean, for all the good reasons that have been highlighted here. So, I would, I would really urge the, the staff and the builder to really resolve the CBS issue as soon as possible. And, and I would hope that, again, the payment in lieu is really done when you are almost done with the project and you are ready to get out. And, and still by that time, if the CBS connection is not yet resolved, only then consider making the payment. I, I don't want you to make the payment upfront and let town deal with CBS and, and we figure out five years later that the road is still not there, right? So, the payment in lieu, if at all we consider, should be at the very end of your project when you are wrapped up with everything and this is the only thing left.
Sure.
Okay?
One point on that, the, the construction process is about a two-year process from, from start to finish. And to clarify, I'm not sure this is in the notes that was submitted, we, Kim Lee Horn did a, did an analysis for what the cost of that connection is and I believe it was about 63,000, if my memory serves me correctly, and our payment in lieu is for 100,000.
To me, it's not a matter of 60,000 or 100,000. It's a matter of getting the connection done as soon as possible, as opposed to, you know, somebody making the payment and the connection doesn't happen for years, right? We all have seen those kinds of projects, especially when you are talking about a government entity trying to make a connection as opposed to a private entity doing the connection, right?
Right. It's not an extremely complicated connection.
Yeah. Right. The, the second question I had was really about the tree heights. You know, if you go back to your, the chart where you had the, where you are going to relay the, the green, right? So, you are going to take out all that green section, that light green section out there as part of your development activity and then put trees and shrubs, et cetera, in there? Is there a, you know, is there a height condition to what kind of trees they can, they need to plant, how many they need to plant?
That's a good question. I'm not exactly, yeah.
So, again, I don't know off the top of my head what the exact planting amount is, but there are a certain amount of trees required per 100 linear feet. And then I believe that a certain percentage usually have to be evergreen as well. And as far as the size, the minimum size that planting is 14 feet tall and a three-and-a-half inch caliper, which is actually quite a bit larger than you'll see in most other municipalities.
So, just so that I understood, at plantation time, it should be 14 feet high.
Correct.
Not that it will go up 14 feet later on.
Correct, yeah. They have to usually reach about a 35 feet or greater mature height.
Okay. The only other, you know, as the last statement, you know, it's more of a request than anything else. Given some of the concerns and the short notice that Carpenter, you know, community has had, I would request you to perhaps have a follow-up session with them, you know, listen to their concerns, see how best you can address them and give them enough air time so that you, you can truly understand their issues and see how best you can resolve them.
Sanjay?
To add to that comment, I would say on the, the community involvement, when it comes to especially the buffer area, maybe there's different options that, that they could potentially, you know, chime in on, like what kind of trees? Is it all evergreen? Is it, you know, what, what would make them most comfortable and most, you know, at ease about, about that, that landscape change that they're going to face? Maybe the bigger area of, of influence at this point.
Yeah, absolutely. That, that's, you, you want to make everybody comfortable in the situation and, and see how best of a barrier can we build between, between the two communities in this space.
That's fair.
Still have a few questions and I'm, I'm going to camp on to Sanjay's. If you could, looking at your sight line number one, you could then go to the next chart. But it looks like those trees between Carpenter Village, excuse me, and the apartments, they're like 100 feet tall.
Yeah.
Is that the undisturbed buffer for the creek?
Even so, I think what you'll see there is mostly love lolly pine right now. I have some love lolly pine in my place that are eons old and at the most, they're about 65, maybe 70 feet. So, that, and it's great that you showed that, but I think it's a little bit of a stretch.
Yeah. That's fair. I didn't.
I, I actually, I have a drone. I went down there today, flew the drone over to those trees and the drone was at about 70 feet and the trees were taller than the drone.
Right.
And you couldn't see through the trees.
Okay.
Whether that's obviously not going to be the case in the, in the wintertime. But I, you know, I had to fly up to about 100 feet before I could see over the trees.
Thank you. That's, that's good information.
Again, this is, I'm not trying to represent that this is an accurate quote. This is just trying to give some scale.
Yeah. It's on a list of things that I appreciate you having done. One is, as you, as you remarked, unlike Cary, which actually in the ordinances insists that you have a neighborhood meeting, you did it voluntarily, so we appreciate that. But I, I like Rob's and Sanjay's suggestion that maybe you could go back for another. You might want to wear a.
Yeah.
Hatters.
A garbage bag, right. Helmet, yeah. I gave everyone a little better notice. I apologize the last time.
I think that would help. You showed us some nice pictures and I have to say that the pictures you showed us made it look like a very good gateway to Morrisville. And my observation of other apartment buildings around the town is that they're generally very well-kept and the lawns are manicured and they look pretty respectable. The drawback we have is that we're looking at a rezoning request, which opens the floodgates, which means that anything that would meet the zoning requirements would be allowed. So, it might not be your particular project that ends up going there. So, we as a board have to remember that and, and we appreciate the fact that you've almost gone down to site plan level because, especially because now, under the UDO, the site plan will come to us, but it will have to be, our only objections could be based on whether or not it meets the UDO. So, we don't have the same flexibility that we did years ago when we could tweak the site plan. So, thank you for doing that. And also, I, I appreciate the way that you've evolved the plan and that you've kind of clustered the buildings together to allow that open space to remain, which is something that is getting more and more precious in Morrisville. So, I think that was a good suggestion to do that. And I think even better than that, just south of this lot, there is a greenway dedicated by the town of Cary, which will connect Carpenter Village to Davis Drive and then the other side of Davis Drive, that greenway that will eventually go to Lake Crabtree. So, I, I think you have shown willingness to dedicate more if necessary, but I think that's already taken care of by the town of Cary, I believe, and maybe Cary has it.
When I spoke with them, I don't believe that's happened quite yes, yet, which is why that kind of flexibility was proposed in that open space condition. So, depending on how the plans of that greenway actually take shape and what their location is, that if need be, if some of it needs to come onto this property, that that would be allowable.
Thank you. And then my other comment, which is, having lived in Morrisville for almost 25 years, I think even each of us, when we arrived, we kind of would like it to stay how it was when we arrived. And if that were the case, Carpenter Village would still be farmland. There was a flashing light on Davis Drive and Morrisville Carpenter. The big event was when the orange side and the red side changed, and Davis Drive had the priority. And then we got traffic lights. And of course, Grace Park, there was one house there, that was it. And my neighbors remembered when you could ride a horse up Davis Drive because it was a dirt track. So, you know, things change, and it's inevitable, and I've seen development around me, and time was when my son, who was interested in astronomy, would come and say how wonderful it was because the night sky was dark. That hasn't been the case for several years. So each of us, I think, has to live with the fact that the green space next to us is always vulnerable and will eventually get developed. Our task as a PCB, I think, is to make sure it gets developed in the best possible way and ends up as being as good as possible. So that's kind of an overall statement. Any further discussion or questions in the board?
No, just, you know, another request that comes to my mind is, based upon a statement you just made, is I'm not a big fan of clearing the current construction approach of clearing the entire landscape and then, you know, building, putting in the trees. So, you know, I would, I would really encourage you that as you develop this property, right, please try and avoid mass clearing and then planting trees, as opposed to, you know, especially when you are talking about keeping in mind the adjoining community, maybe you kind of approach it in a staggered manner of clearing. This way, you know, you are not going to take the entire green area away. Maybe as a need basis, you know, clear the land. Just a request, I don't know whether we can put that in, but it's at least a different way to property development. If we adopt those things, it will be much better for our overall community.
Any other discussion?
General discussion?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, no, I guess I don't, I mean, I think we've discussed a lot, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to further discussion, but.
Can you repeat it, an official query for public comments? This is Department of State.
And say that's not being corrected?
Yes.
You said it both, yeah. You've got a lot of ways to do it.
Let me, how does the board feel on that? I mean, we have a set of procedures and a set of rules, but I think we're a little bit more flexible in the council, for example, so.
Maybe we can take a recess, and, and one person can represent any additional changed opinion or thoughts for the group?
I think that's a great idea. Be comfortable with that?
I mean, yeah, I mean, this is advertised, it was available, but I mean, I don't mind being as responsive as possible. Thank you.
May I ask, is this a role of President D. back in the board?
So here's what we're going to do. We're going to take a 10-minute recess, and we'll probably be available, and if you can get among yourselves and perhaps appoint one person to come back with any additional discussion points, we would welcome that. And we're veering outside our normal procedures here, but we do want to accommodate input, and so we'll do that. So we're going to take a 10-minute recess. I think we're ready, ready to resume. Thanks, everybody, for their tolerance. This is quite an unusual meeting. I don't think we've had one quite like this before. Lady at the podium, are you the designated spokesperson?
Apparently, I am.
Very good. You could give us your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Ann Horton, and I'm at 323 Commons Walk Circle. First, I would like to say thank you very much to the board for your flexibility and understanding and allowing us to speak again. And I would like to apologize for some of our outbursts. As you can tell, this is a very emotional topic for us. We love this area and just want to see it developed correctly. And yes, I did say develop. We recognize that we can't keep things the way they are. We want to see this area grow. We want to see it grow in a responsible, ethical, and beautiful way, and that's why we're here today. So thank you again. We just had a couple of elements or items that we would like to touch upon. One is the green space. We do appreciate that trees are going to be staying in that lower section of the acreage. However, we do recognize that those eight acres are wetlands and probably couldn't be built on anyway. So I appreciate it, it's great, but let's be a little bit realistic here, and having that greenway go through may or may not be able to happen. Our other big concern is safety. Right now, Carpenter Town Lane, when people are coming up Morrisville Carpenter from Davis towards Carpenter, Carpenter Village, people are U-turning, oftentimes at high speeds, onto Carpenter Town Lane to go back down to get into the CVS. And we fear that even with a left turn lane, we're still going to see significantly increased traffic here. And our kids ride bikes, our kids walk, I walk, we're very concerned about the safety and the speed elements. With the development of feral farms happening as well, and people trying to enter onto Morrisville Carpenter that way, we're going to have significant extra traffic, and there is no traffic light planned there today. And I already wait several minutes at high speed, at high traffic times to turn into the neighborhood, and I just fear that's going to get worse. And I've come close to getting hit a couple of times when people just don't want to wait. So that, that is one of our huge concerns. The other comment is, we saw that the area and the schools that this development is currently zoned for is Carpenter Elementary. That is a capped school. And right now, we don't believe that the number of children that they're projecting is accurate. We have seen that Bradford, the development up on Davis at Publix, has significantly more children than was originally projected. Bexley, which is in Carpenter Village, has at least 40 kids waiting for the school bus every morning, and it has less units than this. Our area, using national data and data from other areas to project kids, I don't think really reflects the diverse nature of our neighborhoods. We have a lot of workers that come over to work in RTP that rent homes because they don't know how long they're going to be in the country or in the area, or they're looking to ease into the area. And so we have significantly more families and childrens dwelling in apartments than on the national average. So with our already overcrowded schools, I'm very nervous about, as a parent, worried about that. Also, he didn't really talk a lot about Building 1 or Unit D, which goes up to five stories. Five stories is a really high building. And yes, there are five-story buildings in Cary and Morrisville, none of them back up onto single-family homes. The other thing that we understand, am I out of time?
I don't.
Did you set it for three or six minutes?
About a three-minute or a six-minute, Marty?
You can add three more.
I think she's a representative, so.
Thank you very much.
Another three.
The current plan, which, as you pointed out, once it's rezoned, they can build really probably whatever they want based in the zoning. But the current plan only has 300 parking spots for 290 units. So no visitor parking, and assuming a single vehicle for every unit, which, given our public transportation system, or lack thereof around here, I really don't think that's So I think that was the majority of our points. I hope I didn't miss anything. The only thing we ask is that you do not vote tonight. We would ask that you allow us to have that meeting with the developer when it would occur, when we're not having a home swim meet, and we have more than 48 hours' notice, and that you do take into consideration some of our points tonight. And thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Now, as a board, do we want to have some more discussion? The course of action for us tonight, and I emphasize to the audience that our, our process is to make recommendations to the council. But we have two items that are in tandem on this, which is, one, a potential change to the land use plan. Land use plan at the moment is medium density. The proposal is to change that to Neighborhood Activity Center.
At the moment, sorry, it's low density. It's currently low density, not medium density.
Thank you. As Cary corrects me from residential to Neighborhood Activity Center. So we can vote on that, we can vote for or against. We could suggest other conditions to the applicant, and they would have to be voluntarily accepted by the applicant. We could potentially make a vote that says, you know, we move forward, but we ask the following things to happen between now and the council meeting. Or we could table it one more time, but I think if we were to table it, it would be, it would only be responsible for us to say why we're tabling it and what additional information we need, what steps would have to happen before it came to us again. So that's kind of the overall landscape. Any comments or discussion on that?
I, I did have, Karish, you know, in their commentary, they talked about the parking. I wanted to make sure that's an accurate numbers, or did we, is there a different provision file?
So we look at parking when it comes to the site plan, so to my knowledge, the parking has not been determined, it's not part of the sketch plan as you can see, so I don't know what the proposed parking might be. But our parking requirements are one parking spot for a one-bedroom dwelling, one and a half for a two-bedroom dwelling, and two for a three-bedroom dwelling. And we do have additional spaces required for the recreational facilities, like the pool, or a gym, or other areas like that.
Okay. So in other words, depending upon the site plan itself, the necessary parking conditions will be met?
Right. So depending on how many dwelling units are proposed and what the mix of bedrooms is, and the amount of amenities or other things that require parking, if it met the UDO required parking ratio, then it would be allowed, and if it did not, then we could not approve it.
Okay.
Additional clarification, questions someone had on Unit D, I think that is? We're proposing that would be a four-story now, and before it was five, is that right? That the change that was?
I think that was.
The southwestern building?
That's right.
Can't, I can't see the text very well, so I'm just trying to clarify.
I'm sorry, am I going in the wrong direction?
Yeah, D. Let us say four now, right?
It's four, yeah.
Right, it's four. I don't remember if it had a designated height before.
It was, my recollection, it was five before.
It was four before, and it's still four now?
Yeah, okay, wonderful.
And does that include an additional below grade? That's four total, okay.
Building C is four in the front part of the building, and five in the rear part of the building.
So the only five-story is the rear part of Building C?
Correct.
If we have no further discussion, then we need to make a motion and move on.
I have one. One more question. I was going back and reading through, they were showing the improvements on Morrisville Carpenter, but going back through the actual text, it really only talks about payment in lieu, it doesn't mention the actual improvements. Are the improvements going to be occurring and this additional money for the impact, or is it either or?
Yeah, it would be both. So there are frontage requirements based off of whatever development we come in here would need to do frontage improvements based off of the cross-section identified in the transportation plan, in addition to other improvements that would be identified as a result of the impacts. And some of those additional impacts are being addressed with the payment in lieu for the turn lanes.
Carrie, can you pull up the total number of proposed conditions?
Do you want all of the conditions together? I have them in the PowerPoint kind of listed individually, and then I also have them in the ordinance.
Which one is easier for you?
Okay, I will pull up the, let's see here. So I can't really pull them up altogether because they go onto two pages, but. Do we need to scroll through them, or?
I'm ready for the next page.
Okay.
It says the maximum number of building stories should be in accordance with the attached sketch plan. So does that mean exactly per the plan, or in general, it could be up to five stories?
No, it'd have to be based on the attached plan, on the sketch plan, so that the area shown as three stories couldn't be more than three stories, those shown as four couldn't be more than four, and that one portion as five, that'd be the only spot.
So this gives us a lot more control than we would have done. Doesn't exactly lock the site plan in, but it's a good indication. Thank you, Carrie. So anybody ready to make a motion?
I don't know if I can make a recommendation, but.
What is that?
Okay. So my only request to the voting members would be that the payment in lieu for the underground cabling, you know, be, that we put, that be taken out as a statement, and if they need to make a payment in lieu for the cabling, they come back later on for approval for that. And the second would be that payment in lieu for connecting to Davis Drive be the extremely last option, and, you know, they should make every effort to make that connection as part of the development.
On the assumption that we make a recommendation to move ahead?
Yeah.
Arlene?
My feeling right now is, I would actually like to table it to next month, give everybody a chance to have a meeting with Mr. Spiegel, maybe familiarize themselves with all of the details. That's my recommendation. I don't know if that's a motion or what, but that's just me. I don't know how the others feel.
Work for that.
Between now and then, as far as the proposal itself and the conditions. I think it should happen anyway, especially when it comes to the buffer discussion and letting the community see a part of that solution. I don't know that we can put a condition around that, though. I don't know that we can put a condition around that, though.
The only thing else on that time period in addition to talk about it, there was to see if we could push the issue of the connection to Davis Drive and go so far as to make this contingent on that happening. I'm just not comfortable with this being up in the air. And out there as it may happen sometime eventually, so time can be used to work that out.
Board has gotten about as much information. And we have sent recommendations on the past suggesting, make sure you find out about this meeting. And town council's going to open a public comment hearing for at least two meetings. And I agree, my colleague, I'm not sure if we postpone, table it another month, that we as a board would get any additional information, would assist with decision making.
Thank you. So with that, I'll make a motion that we, that we do. Do I need to read the whole motion first? This page, is this the right one? So I motion that we recommend to approve the town council resolution, to the town council resolution 2018-246-0A pertaining to the amendment of the land use plan for property, commonly known as 1107, 1109, and 1113 Morrisville Carpenter Road and Zero Davis Drive and located at the southwest corner of Morrisville Carpenter Road and Davis Drive to the Neighborhood Activity Center designation. Keep going. Okay.
I think for the land use plan amendment, we don't need to make the consistency statement because the consistency statement relates to the zoning, right?
That's correct.
That's, you can stop there. So that was.
Yes, that works. All right.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion of the motion itself? Bring down a call for a vote. All those in favor of motion, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I think it's incumbent on those who say nay to explain why. You don't have to say too much, but it's a good message.
All right. Probably three major things. One is the traffic safety and the gateway message, which would be welcome to traffic hell. I don't think we need more monstrous buildings in that location. And I don't like the idea of being so many stories that the people in the upper stories can be gopping down on the backyards of the people that back up to that development. I just think it's too much in that location.
And want to offer any comments? You don't have to.
No, I would echo those. That's.
Well, for me, it's very, very close. It just seems a little bit too much, but maybe that's ultimately what is the sort of thing that will happen there. So I think then, having said that, we don't need to do a vote on the zoning. And what will happen is this recommendation will go from us to council and there'll be opportunity for further comment at the council meetings. So that is the conclusion of that particular topic. Thank you all for your tolerance tonight.
Chairman, we will need a, because of how state statute recently changed, there is not, there used to be kind of separate actions and we're not required to do land use plan amendments in the art. We're doing it for the record anyway. So make sure that we're complying with the North Carolina general statutes. We do need a recommendation on the consistency statement as well as the rezoning. Recognizing that as a recommendation for denial, but we do need that formal action due to how statute's currently written.
So if we were to make a recommendation against the rezoning, then we would have to say that it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan.
You can, yes. So in this particular instance, since the land use plan motion failed, you will go ahead and say that it's not consistent with the land use plan. You'll want to take a look at the script as it's written and kind of modify it and state why, you know, it's not consistent. And then you'll go ahead and make a motion on the actual ordinance as well.
Do we need a motion on the consistency statement or the consistency statement? It should be part of the motion on the zoning.
You still have to have two separate ones. So you can say that the proposed ordinance is not consistent with the adopted land use plan of low-density residential. And as a result, you do not believe it's in the best interest of the public to modify the ordinance.
Sometimes despair of general statute. So I think it's a simplified consistency statement because it's actually an inconsistency statement. And I'm going to invite either Tim or Harleen to make that motion.
Your mic is off.
Fine.
Your mic is off.
Sorry. Oh, I've got this. It's just like.
I think there'll be some nots and some negatives.
Okay. Consistency statement. As required by general statute 160A 383, the planning and boarding finds that the requested zoning map amendment is not consistent with the comprehensive plan and is not in the public interest. Because.
Can we just say period?
You can say it's not in the public interest. And then you can go on further to state that, you know, you're forwarding a recommendation of a denial to town council.
We are recommending a denial to the town council. Right. And then do I go on to the zoning map amendment?
Get a vote on that one first and then we'll move on to the ordinance for the zoning map amendment.
So I have a motion on the table that we find that the requested zoning map amendment is not consistent with the comprehensive plan and is not in the public interest. Second for that motion.
One second.
All in favor of that motion, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay and raise your hand.
Nay.
So that is passed. So now we need a zoning map amendment.
Here we make a motion. I hereby recommend that the planning and zoning board denies the town council ordinance 2018-246-0 signing zoning map amendment for the property commonly known as 1107, 1109, and 1113 Morrisville Carpenter Road and Zero Davis Drive and located at southwest corner of Morrisville Carpenter Parkway and Davis Drive to the conditional Neighborhood Activity Center zoning district, Res 18-02.
Thank you, Tim. So I have that motion and it's a motion to recommend denial. All in favor of the motion, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, raise your hand.
Nay.
I think that does conclude this item. Thank you. Elliot, you're up next with our 9A.
Thank you. All right. This is item 2018-271-0, request for a structure in the public right-of-way encroachment agreement. The applicant Preston Community Association is proposing to construct a planter wall in front of their existing community sign at the southeast corner of the intersection of Crabtree Crossing Parkway and Morrisville Parkway, which will encroach into the town's public right-of-way along Crabtree Crossing Parkway. The aerial drawing shown here, provided by the applicant, shows the approximate size and location of the planter wall. And just so we're all clear, this is Crabtree Crossing side as we're looking at it.
I hate to interrupt. Can we go back? Isn't this a different corner than what we were? Okay, no, I see now.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to, yeah, just reversed.
Gotcha.
Steph recommends approval of the encroachment agreement request based on compliance with town requirements, the applicant assuming liability and responsibility for the wall, and approval from N C D O T for the portion of the wall encroaching into the Morrisville Parkway right-of-way. As a reminder, with an assumption of liability and maintenance responsibility from the applicant, the town has traditionally approved encroachment agreements in the past. The planning and zoning board is being presented with this encroachment agreement in order to meet the requirements set forth in section 2.5.24 of the U D O, which can be found in your briefing packet as attachment three. The board is asked to review the requests and make a recommendation to the town council of approval or denial of the application. And that's all I have. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Anybody?
I thought it was pretty clear.
Chairman, remember a number of years ago when Preston, time to drive by today, but at that same intersection, they requested to put the gazebo? Gazebo got built, didn't it?
Yep. I think, maybe I've seen a gazebo somewhere else. I'm thinking of somewhere different.
So this is just in?
It's that corner.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a question, Elliot. As I looked at this, it looked like sightline was no issue. It wasn't going to impact any traffic looking left or right?
No, sightlines. So the portion they're showing here would only be three feet high at the top and then planting on, plantings on top. So it won't affect sightlines for turns.
Even if you're in a low-slung sports car, you still wouldn't have any issues?
No.
Second question, and I hate to be picking on this, but looking at the planter wall section, I didn't see any tieback from that wall into the earth behind it. I'm worried about whether the wall will fall forwards.
Oh, the separation between the existing sign and the actual wall that's going to be built?
If we look at the section of the planter wall, which I think is somewhere, it was in our packet. It just shows a vertical wall with a bank of earth behind it. Not even that one.
Come at this right here?
Yeah, no, it wasn't even that one. It was the technical drawing.
Oh, okay.
Showing the construction of the wall.
Oh, it was down below. It's at the very bottom of that.
There we go. The simple question is, what's to stop that wall falling forwards over time?
That.
I guess we just have to rely on it being well-constructed.
Correct. Yes. And engineered properly.
Yeah, if you could just, you know, every time I've ever tried to build a retaining wall, it's been a real challenge. And, you know, you need to tie it back into the ground behind the wall and all those sorts of things. So just a trivial point.
Now that you mention that, I mean typically, I mean the overturning force is coming from the higher grade. And I guess they're trying to avoid digging up the existing sidewalk, but the L shape is sort of reversed.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously you do have a little bit of weight on the top, but I mean, I'm not an engineer, so I have built retaining walls before, but I guess we would, yes, have to assume that that was been designed by somebody that has thought it through.
Anyway.
The inspections department did review and sign off on the agreement, but we could ask them to take another look at it. And there'll be a permit that comes in for it as well, so it could be reviewed then.
Thank you.
And of course Preston is fully responsible if something was to go wrong.
Correct. They have some responsibility.
Right. Were you ready to make a motion?
I have not seen any specifics on the flowers that are planning on being planted there. However, I do know it's flowers. That's all, as far as I know. Yeah. And again, our engineering department has reviewed the application and they did look at lines of sight, but I can just double-check with them, just make sure they're.
Is there a, I didn't say, is there a way to key cross Morrisville Carpenter, cross there, right? Is that a stoplight or is that non-stoplight?
There is a stoplight there, yes. Yep.
Chairman, just as a reminder, the U D O does require that we hold a public comment session on this item.
Thank you.
And we do have a representative for the applicant that is willing to answer questions, too, if you may have for them.
So we're going to open the public comment session. Anybody who wishes to speak, please step forward.
Hello, I'm Joe Cable. I'm president of the Preston Community Association and also the landscape chair for Preston Community Association. We've been working on this project for close to two years. It took us over a year to get N C D O T approval. And of course, you'll notice on the plan that that circle is the stanchion that holds the light, which basically obliterated our whole corner from a landscape perspective and an aesthetic perspective. And so we've been working with the D O T for the better part of last year to just get an approval on a plan that would actually work for them and got approval from them. We had started out because coming from Crabtree Crossing, turning right, going up the hill to the tunnel, it's going up the hill. So we had originally planned a staggered, a staggered wall that would look more aesthetically pleasing. And the D O T told us that if we went above two feet, that they would require handicap guardrail. Yeah. So in the interest of time, to keep it, you know, at a year, we agreed to keep, to keep the wall at two feet. So we have a consistent wall along the side, along the new sidewalk. And then it will, it will cut back into the existing monument at Third Points. We do, we did that at Third Points to be able to give us a better grade, better level of grade based on where the sidewalk was. In regard to your landscape question, we just finished a three-year landscape program and we're just about to institute a new three-year landscape program. And in that program, we put together a monument program. We have over 50 monuments. And we did an installation where we transferred from daylilies to boxwoods. And you see that on the perimeter of Town of Morrisville and also on Town of Cary property. This is the only property, we haven't been able to do this installation. And so we're hoping with the approvals that we could do this before the snow in January. But we will, to answer your question, we'll be doing a boxwood row consistent with what's across the street on the other side with some plantings in front. But again, it's a, it's. But again, it's a two-foot block wall with a concrete cap, which is consistent with the monument behind it. So we think it'll be a nice aesthetic effect, and do the best we can do with what we were left after the project. This is a combination project. We're riding the project through to completion. The Prestonwood Country Club owns the property and the monument, but we maintain it. And so it's a joint effort, so if you have any other questions, I'm here, but hopefully that answered your questions.
Thank you. I guess we shall close the public comment session. Now entertain a motion.
Making public an assumption here, if we ever had to, you know, increase the size of Morrisville Parkway, right? Approach back upon their landscaping, I'm making this assumption.
I think I read that somewhere.
Yeah, the DOT will certainly help reserve that right.
Yeah.
It was just...
I'll say if we were to have to expand it...
Both encroachments would still be our right, I guess, because it is our right-of-way? Is that correct?
DOT right-of-way.
So the question was, if the right-of-way, or if we had to expand the road, this is in the right-of-way, so this wall would be able to be moved if it was needed to be? We have that right?
We're looking up the answer now.
Okay.
Trying to read the agreement, actually, right now.
Correct.
But I guess I'd hear an answer, I'm not sure. I'm half-dead, though, so...
Looking it up.
Oh, they're looking it up, okay, okay, okay.
We'd need to at least give them 14 days' notice to remove, but it looks like the agreement does cover that type of circumstance.
Is somebody ready with a piece of paper? It's ready written for us.
I'll do it. Okay, for motion on 2018-271-0, the right-of-way encroachment agreement, I hereby recommend that the planning and zoning board recommends approval to the Town Council Resolution 2018-271-0 pertaining to a structure in the public right-of-way encroachment agreement for a masonry wall to be located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Crabtree Crossing Parkway and Morrisville Parkway, encroaching into the Crabtree Crossing Parkway public right-of-way, ROW 18-01.
A second?
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elliot. So Courtney, on vacation. I don't think the rest of the board knows that you are actually on vacation this week.
Probably not, but you know, it's no big deal at all. Okay, so the item that I have has to do with amending the ordinance to help facilitate the development of the Main Street. Specifically, it's text amendment number 18-02. Some of this is going to sound very familiar, because it's, again, additional changes to the alternative equivalent of compliance. The reason we just weren't able to run them together is we were trying to meet the deadline for other applicants with regards to undergrounding utilities. So when you look through the ordinance itself, you'll see some highlighted blue... highlights in blue. That represents text that's proposed in the undergrounding of utilities text amendment, but hasn't been adopted. So I just wanted to reflect that change in there. Just by way of background, the Town Center Plan was adopted in 2007, and then the Main Street Zoning District was created in 2010 as part of the Town Center Code. And really, the main purpose of the Main Street is to facilitate the development of a central gathering place within Morrisville's Town Center. It would include a mix of retail, civic, office, institutional, restaurant, and residential units, uses, excuse me, and really in a compact pedestrian setting. So the image that you have on the screen here is actually what was pulled out directly of the UDO, if you look at the Main Street District. So that's in essence what was envisioned when the plan was adopted in 2007 and the code was created in 2010. So moving forward, really over the past 11 years, there have been numerous implementation projects out of the Town Center Plan, including the restoration of the Historic Church, we have the Morrisville Healthy Food Hub, which is really one of the more recent ones, the History Center out in the lobby of this building, and again, the Historic Walking Loop Trail, it's another recent implementation item. And really, the next step is Phase 1 of the actual Main Street District, which is now known as Carolina Street. This is underway. You can see that trees have been cleared in the area, making way for the extension of Carolina Street, as well as the traffic circle on Town Hall Drive. And also, Fox Club is being extended from the church to its town's development south to intersect with Carolina Street. And as part of this Phase 1 development, a portion of it is private, but a small corner right on the northeast corner of Town Hall Drive and Carolina Avenue is the Morrisville Community Park, and that's part of Phase 1A, a Phase 1 or 1A, if you will. So here are some of the issues that are running into play with regards to how the code was written and what's coming into play now. So first, the extension of the new roads, they actually don't meet the 350-foot maximum block length. And that's partly due to the fact that we're working with some existing road networks. So a modification with regards to the AEC would be necessary for that. If you look at the image in the Main Street District, it was designed to have this wide sidewalks with some parallel parking, excuse me, with some angled parking. Well, when we designed the road, we decided to mirror what was on Jeremiah Street with parallel parking, so that's another deviation. And then the sidewalk width. If you look in the actual UDO text itself, it's kind of silent on what the width of the sidewalk should be, but it is eight feet on Jeremiah Street, and we are proposing to build eight feet along Town Hall Drive and eight feet along Carolina. And that was at the direction of council at a work session that we had regarding some of the details of the town core. So those are some modifications that need to occur based off a town project that's occurring out there, which is the road portion. Now moving on to the library, and I have included an image of the library here. This is a draft image, so there's been some tweaks since this was put together, but this gives you a general idea of what the library will look like. So there are some principle and intensity standards, specifically there's build-to-lines and floor-area ratios. And a floor-area ratio is probably not... I can't think of a single item where we've actually come before this board with floor-area ratio. It's unique to the Main Street District, and it's really designed to make sure that buildings are going to be closer to two feet, and not really have... two stories, and not have one-story buildings. Well, the library itself is actually a one-story building, so it doesn't comply. We've also, as part of this project, how I'm worked with Progress Energy, they're upgrading their, not Progress Energy, PSNC, they're upgrading their gas line. So they've already upgraded it north of Morrisville Carpenter Road, and they're doing the southern portion of the project now. And as part of that upgrade, we asked them to slightly relocate it to allow buildings and structures to take place along Carolina, and in doing so, it's hugging Town Hall Drive now. So where a building should have been built along Town Hall Drive, we can't. So you have this, you know, 20-foot gap, and as a result, they cannot build up to the back of sidewalk because of the gas line. So there's a deviation that will be needed for that. And the last two items are really some of the ground-floor transparency. If you look on the library side that's adjacent to Carolina, it's all glass, and it's very transparent, you can see into the library. However, on Town Hall Drive, that's actually where their mechanical room is located, so instead of the glass being on pedestrian scale, it kind of goes around the edge of the roof line and down the sides, and so it's not meeting the transparency requirement.
I'm sorry, what's wrong with seeing a mechanical room?
It's a...
I know, I'm just, I mean, just let it be open.
Well, and what they... They actually brick theirs in, because they've had problems with vandalism at other sites. So it's actually kind of a bricked-walled-in area. It looks seamless with the building in itself, so you wouldn't actually know that it's in there. So the proposed amendment is really taking a look at the alternative equivalent of compliance, and targeting specifically, I'm going to move on, is changes that would support the implementation of the town's Main Street District, specifically on Carolina Street. So anything that would be built on Carolina Street would be eligible for any of the deviations that are proposed in here. But the alternative equivalent of compliance, just as a recap from last month, it was implemented in 2014 with the adoption of the UDO. It is a quasi-judicial process, and it does require review by both the planning and zoning board, as well as the Town Council. And then, only specific code standards would be eligible, and those are located in your ordinance portion of the packet. The amendment would allow applicants to submit for deviations, again, only on Main Street. The standards of approval, and I'm not going to read them, since we read them last month, but they have to meet all of these standards, and the one in blue, which is the second to the bottom bullet, again, that one's proposed as part of the undergrounding, so I just denoted that in a different color. So what's asked of the council tonight is to review it, and if you feel you have enough information to make a recommendation this evening, to go through and vote on a consistency statement, as well as the text amendment itself, and there is a public comment session that's required for this item. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I do have representatives that were developing the site plan, as well as the architectural side here, if you have any questions from the library.
Courtney, let's officially open the public comment session. Anybody who wishes to comment on this, please come forward. Have anybody signed up, Marty?
Probably did not sign up for this item, though. Is there a Roger that would like to speak?
Seeing nobody, we'll close the public comment session. Would it be appropriate to ask the architects and planners to comment? Having made you stay this late, if you'd like to come up and say a few words, that'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, and specifically, it is kind of the architecture team, as well as the landscape architecture team, are the ones that are here.
And we do appreciate you staying late, thank you.
No problem. I'm Julie McLaren, I'm with Little Diversified Architectural Consulting, and our consultants are CLH Engineering, excuse me, Design. And I'm a resident of Morrisville, and so we've been working with both the town and the county. We worked with the town on the... A little bit getting the package together for the developer. So we've been working with the Town Hall for some time, or the Town... the Main Street Plan. But I'll take any questions you have. We are working for the county. We have done another library for the county. We've been looking at a lot of other libraries similar that the county has done, and each one is unique and creative. And we think that this site, and this location, and the challenges and the constraints of that site with the roundabout, really called for something special and unique there, and we feel like that's what we're providing.
Thank you. I'm going to start with the questions, if I may. Is it more than 350 feet? Is that why we need to change this part of the UDO about the 350-foot block?
You want to address, I don't understand the question. Yes, currently it is.
So here's my, you know, kind of ultra-negative, and I apologize for giving you that message so quickly during the recess, but it seems like we have a very elaborate UDO that was based on a Town Center Plan, into which a lot of effort and discussion and thought went into that. And what I'm seeing in front of me is like a Mack truck driving right through the middle of that.
Yeah.
And I'm reassured a little bit by Courtney's statement that the sidewalks will be consistent with Jeremiah Street, because I think that's kind of our classic, was our first example of how we wanted the Town Center to look. So from a professional point of view, do you think it matches Jeremiah Street, or do you think it's something totally different?
Well, it is a unique site, that on the corner with the roundabout, with the constraints, with the gas line easement. So it needed to be different. And it called for a lot of things, and there's really no back on the building. We talked about the mechanical being on the front, that's because there's really no back to this building. We were trying to be sensitive to the development that's going to occur, which would be more in keeping with some of the images of the downtown and the Mass General Store that you saw the image of. We were thinking more in terms of what that development was going to be, and that this was a very special piece at the beginning of it, when you enter it. And it's a library, and it's very special. Plus, it's also bridging the height, it being a one-story, very small, less than 9,000 square feet, structure. We were trying to also make it look a little bigger than it really was, and we were trying to bridge that difference between a deck that's probably a six-level deck, and more of a four-story residential mixed-use development beside it, that's more in keeping with that more traditional look that I think you're talking about. So this was special, and it was a civic building that's on a string of civic buildings like the one we're in now, and this is something special. And so we were trying to do something that was unique.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for these?
Your point of 9,000 square feet and a small library. One of my challenges when I go to the Wake Regional Library is, there is not enough, there is more demand than the space available, I mean, not just for books, but just for, you know, for the students who go there, and all the other activities that happen in the library. So my basic question is, are we limited to just one story by mandate, or is it by choice? And why not go to two-story, probably dollars, right?
Well, I think it's what the county allocated for this particular library, and we really... they didn't see the demand and need for it to be larger. I kind of agree with you that it would be nice to expand, but that wasn't in the plan for really any of the community libraries that Wake County is doing. Now, what we did, what we tried to do is to make an open plan as much as possible, and make the space feel bigger, and the layout lends itself to feeling like a little bit bigger space than it really is. So we tried to do the most that we could do, and we really kept creeping up a little bit, as much as we could, but real tight budget, and they've done several libraries over the last few years, Wake County has, with several different designers, and they're all about the same size.
And just to add to that is, and I didn't mention this, is this library was supposed to go at Cedar Fork Elementary, at some of that green space over there, but several years ago, when the Town Center Plan really came into fruition, the planning director at the time reached out to the county and said, you know what, this would be a great asset. So part of it was that there had already been, you know, funding put in place, there's some bonding, and then we were then asking to relocate it. So that's one of the reasons that the funding is what it is, is it went out at one location, and as the town, we asked them to move it. So that kind of played a part into the size of the building as well.
Yeah, but, you know, to me, we are missing the reason for having this, right? We wanted to have a community place where all the Morrisville members can go and utilize. So if you have got 9,000 square feet, let's say, how much square foot would be allocated to books versus computers, and then how much is left really for other community activities, right? If it is going to be a small, you know, a small room in the corner, then you are really missing the point of creating a unit that is going to meet the demands of this community.
Well, and I think the library is just a component of that. So if you look at the Town Center Core as a whole, I mean, there are other opportunities to integrate a large green space in there, you know, potentially, I mean, there's been tossed out, no decisions made at the council level, do we include some type of community center for those things that you're exactly describing? So really, to create a synergy through multiple different uses, the goal is that this is one of many to come. But I do suspect there ultimately could be a green space and other community assets that are funded by the town into this area to help bring in a sense of place and a sense of activity. of activity and things for people to do as you're describing.
Yeah, my, my, you know, as Morrisville is as small, as we are all constrained with space, right? I, I would really like, I mean, even though you may not construct a two-story building right away, right, maybe, you know, at least develop the architecture, the foundations, you know, the columns, et cetera, to at least maybe in the future, add another floor on top of it, right? So that you don't have to rip off the entire building and reconstruct it from scratch.
These discussions happened, and since this is part of Phase 1A, I should say, of the demonstration project, all of these discussions happened at the council level.
Okay.
And the library was open to potentially being the first floor of a two-story building, understanding the town had to contribute to the rest. Council made the decision to move forward with the single-story building. So that was a council direction and that's another reason that they are only proposing a one-story building that cannot be added on to. It's its own circled-out leased parcel and the rest will occur. And that was a direction based off of council when working with the library to develop a design for this.
Will the library site plans come before this board?
Libraries are approved administratively at the staff level. Happy to bring it back to show it to everybody, just so you can have the information, but it is approved administratively.
If, if this goes forward, Courtney, doesn't that mean that there's going to be a quasi judicial hearing?
So yes, that part you will be participating in, but the actual approval of the library you won't. But for the deviations, you will be participating in that.
And I know that's baked into the UDO, but is there an opportunity to change that to not being a quasi judicial hearing?
I worked with Clarion Associates who actually wrote the original AEC as part of the UDO. They've been working to draft this, actually. And I asked that very question, based off the conversation last month, sent an email and asked, can this be a legislative process? And they said, unfortunately, it cannot within the legal framework that we have.
Okay. I mean, I don't know anybody who likes the quasi judicial, except some of the paid people who are paid to be the experts, but, but that doesn't allow us any sort of subjectivity. Anyway, I guess I'm beating a dead horse there, so. Next question, Courtney. If, if we approve this, what kind of precedent are we setting?
This would be available for anybody on Carolina Street. For these specific deviations that we're creating, they would be eligible for anybody else to go through this process.
That's kind of my concern. You know, we've got this wonderful set of objectives and plans and details, and then, oh, by the way, you can, you can do this and the only control you have is a quasi judicial where only experts supposedly can talk.
That was the easiest thing for us to do quickly, to allow this to kind of transact and move forward. There's a Phase 2 of the text amendment that we're working with, Owen Clarion, specifically preparing a mixed-use district for the Main Street itself. So it would be a legislative process. So if anybody did not want to follow what was in the current adopted standards, that would be an option that is available and it would be discretionary at that point or generally discretionary since it's a rezoning process. But this was the, based off the timeline that they have for the bonds, in order, if they don't meet a certain deadline, the library can't be constructed, they're coming to the end of the timeframe. This is the fastest method that we had to allow the library to move forward.
Okay. Well, I hate to be the historian of the group, but, you know, originally the library was going to be just across the street because land was, was donated. That was probably 20, 22 years ago. So we've been talking about a library for a long, long time. And now we're in a time crunch and we have to do this right away.
Yes, sir.
Interesting. So I'll, I'll quit moaning, I'm sorry.
Government works, isn't it?
So any other comments or are we ready to move on?
My, I'm sorry, I'm still stuck at the, I know the town approved this, but I'm, I'm stuck. Maybe I'm just wondering what were they thinking, right? Because now, as soon as you create a one-story library, you now kind of also have this, as, as we start building around it, you are always going to wonder, does it fit in with the overall, you know, any new building? Will it, if it is a two-story building, now the library is a one-story building, right, sitting right next to it, you know, you may want to say, well, maybe not, we should have all buildings one-story, yeah, right? So.
Heard an entryway and a buildup of.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry.
So anybody like to make a motion? Must be getting late.
Yep.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Hey, let me know if I go too fast. As required by General Statute 168-383, I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of Resolution 2018-302-0 to the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the adoption of a planned consistency review statement for text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to Main Street, AMN 18-02, based on the following. The proposed UDA, UDO text amendments are consistent with the comprehensive plan and are in the public interest because the proposed amendments support the following policies in the town's adopted land use plan. Policy 1A, promote growth and development that contributes to and builds upon the town's overall image as a well-planned, attractive, livable, and unique community in the Triangle Region. Policy 2A, promote development that fosters a sense of place by improving the character of the built environment, including visually appealing buildings, streetscapes, amenities, and public spaces. Wells Project ID number 10 in the town center plan, design and construct civic cultural facility and public plaza. Wait, right? Or vote.
Thank you, Lee. So do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Motion, the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you.
I'll just keep on.
Please go.
I'll hereby move to recommend approval of Ordinance 2018-302-0 to the Morrisville Town Council approving text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to the Main Street, AMN 18-02.
I have a second to that motion. Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you so much for staying late and putting up with my.
How far along is the plan?
Thank you.
Soon do we get a library.
I was going to say, what are you, like, 75%?
I think we're like 95.
Okay. So you'll be going to bits soon.
Oh, item 11, Courtney.
Before I move on to the newsletter, I just wanted to do a quick couple of reminders. One is we do have another meeting date this month on 8/23. And we also moved our work set, excuse me, our normal meeting in September to September the 6th. So I just wanted to make that quick reminder for you. And we do have a new employee, Natalie Nye. She was sitting in the audience the entire time. I don't have anything written, so I'm going to make this impromptu off the top of my head here. She comes to us via Illinois. Her and her husband moved down here and we are happy to have her on board. So I think this makes her like our third person from Illinois, plus a bunch of contractor contracts right now. So we're being invaded. As long as they keep their cold weather and snow, they can keep on coming now. But we're really happy to have her on board. She's been here three weeks now and we've already assigned some projects to her. So you will see her back here with some rezonings here pretty soon for some map cleanup work that we're working on. So just want to say welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome, Natalie.
I'm glad after three weeks you are still here.
Hope we didn't scare you too much tonight.
Baptism with fire. Okay, so the next is the monthly newsletter. The only thing of really any substance is the Stadler Meyer subdivision was submitted and I received a request to talk about it a little more, so I am happy to do so. Just give me a second here. Well, as the plan slowly loads here, it does, I'll try and describe it since it's not loading here. Oh, there we go. Okay, where is this zoom? We've changed this and I have no idea where the zoom button is. Look at it now. Ah, there we go. Okay, so by way of context, this is the Carolina Street traffic circle that's under construction now. We're sitting approximately kind of over in here. Morrisville Carpenter Road is running along this direction here. So they'll have the one entrance on Morrisville Carpenter Road and the one entrance on Town Hall Drive that complies with their rezoning conditions. They have single-family units located along this portion and townhome units located right along here that also complies with their rezoning condition. It's under review right now, so I can't tell you it complies with all the conditions at this time, but they do have the overlook located here. So we've been working with them for quite a while. But that's to give you a general overview if anybody has any questions.
Oh, the connection to the traffic circle, isn't that a pretty steep slope there?
It is a condition that they're required to build it if they wanted to have more than 30 units.
No, I mean, I'm just, it's like, it's, I mean, I'm trying to imagine if you could stop on that in the winter, I don't know that you could.
There's a substantial culvert that will actually be put in to get across. So I don't think the grade will end up being that dramatic because they'll end up putting in a culvert.
And the, hold a sec. On Morrisville Carpenter, is that because the city wasn't going to let them have a second?
It's not needed. It meets our cul-de-sac requirement, so they're allowed to propose a cul-de-sac there.
On this map, there's, that's still the Indian Creek Trailhead and does the Greenway still front that property or what happens to the Greenway?
The Greenway will continue to be part of the property and that doesn't change.
Any particular things that might have to happen with Crabtree Creek, there was Indian Creek there? I mean, special, I just wonder.
Not that I know of.
I'm just being nosey.
Not that I know of. I can't say that there definitively, nothing will occur, but none that I'm aware of.
Yes, this on Morrisville Carpenter Road, that, that entry, is this in front of the Savannah? No, Savannah is further up, right? So is this like in front of that Morrisville Village or is this somewhere later?
This is the Groves here.
This should be in front of that.
So.
Morrisville Village place, right?
That Morrisville Market that?
Yeah, Morrisville Market.
Sort of comes out to?
I do believe that appears to be the alignment.
So at one time, there was talk about them moving the entrance into Morrisville Market so they could get full movement as part of the Morrisville widening and that these guys were coming across from that. Is that reflected in that?
That is not reflected in this. My understanding, and I don't know the Morrisville Carpenter Road project, well, I mean, I know discussion, but I don't know where it's all landed. But part of it was to allow full access for the, actually, I'm going to have to look at Ariel, hold on, before I completely misspeak, let me get my bearings.
But isn't there coming out from Morrisville Market?
Only one road now. They talked about adding a second.
There's going to be another one, isn't there?
It looks like that is the new road location, actually. So Morrisville Carpenter entrance is further down here, or the Morrisville Square entrance. This is that new location and this is an undeveloped parcel located right here.
And they would potentially get, be able to access that same point, I guess.
Correct. That's going to be the full point access for this development, Morrisville Square, as well as this development.
So basically, there wouldn't be a divider between the four lanes of that. That's what you mean by full access, right?
Full access means, yes, you can take a right in.
Yeah.
Left out, you know.
It's not as heavily developed as I thought it might be. We live in Savannah, Lino. It's Deardorff.
The townhomes are not backing to you.
Right, exactly.
Pretty narrow lots.
A little bit more narrow than Savannah, probably.
What's that dotted line where that?
This dotted line?
If you go a little bit for, to your left, right, keep coming left, keep coming left.
Left.
Keep coming left.
That's a B and P.
A B and P, that's one of their stormwater devices.
Buddy, what?
A stormwater device.
Oh, storm.
Stormwater, pardon.
Okay.
Narrow townhomes, one-car garage.
They look like it from the image, but I can't tell you definitively. I haven't seen elevations.
Two-bedroom, only one and a half cars.
They actually do that sometimes.
Thank you. I think.
Thanks for doing that, Courtney. It's good.
That's all that I have, so I will turn it over back to the chair.
I'm good.
Lee.
Yes, sir.
I'm good.
8/23 meeting, scheduled for what time? I thought it was going to be out of state, well, not, so.
As far as I know, it's the normal 6:30.
Exactly.
But I can double check.
That's the note we got, 6:30.
I believe, but I'll, I'll have Brad follow up with the board to confirm.
Will he be sending something out?
I do not know what he's putting together at this point.
He could at least send a.
There will be the agenda at least, but I don't know if there's any attachments, but I will find out.
So I have a couple of questions.
I think it's more like a design session, so you have to come with your imagination.
Is it just us or is it also Town Council or?
It's just the Planning and Zoning Board.
Can you tell me where we are with the power line discussion? Add a sub-date.
An update, she's been working hard on it.
It's on the August 14th agenda, so the public hearing is scheduled for that night. That's next Tuesday. Potential action that night as well. They're going to hold the public hearing. That's kind of towards the beginning of the agenda. And then they are going to have a workshop towards the end of the agenda and depending on the workshop, they may or may not vote that night.
And just a comment, Michelle, I thought your summary that you presented to the council was, was absolutely super and you gave a great summary of what we on the board have discussed as well. So thank you for doing that. That's good. What I meant to do when I walked in was to look carefully to see if I could find a Wi-Fi password.
They not put on your, on the dais? I had asked that they be placed up there.
A smile.
Marty's given me a head shake, so I think somebody forgot to do it inadvertently. They are also, I had IT and I think that's what's hung up on either side. So my apologies, it didn't make it up there. It will be up there next month, though.
Okay.
So my apologies and I had asked them to post it in here as well.
That's fine, but, I mean, I was at the council meeting last and I tried to log on and that's when I found that I needed a password. So in the recess, I went to Erin and said, could you please email it to me? And then I realized, of course, with no Wi-Fi.
I did have it hung up, so there's one right over there, so when you're sitting
So in the recess, I went to Erin and said, could you please email it to me? And then I realized, of course, with no Wi-Fi.
I did have it hung up, so there's one right over there. So when you're sitting in your magic spot, it's right next to you.
I'm gonna have to take that piece of paper and actually have it in front of me, because it's not an easy password usually.
Well, last month it was, now it is very easy. Is this easier question? Well, she is supposed to be, every guy.
Well, password, it has to be secret.
So upcoming events, you mentioned that, I think, already, Courtney. I think we're ready for item 15. Who hasn't made a motion so far tonight?
Do we, do we know where the high school, middle school debate ultimately ended? Do you know what they are actually planning to do there yet?
Are you speaking of the parcel that's under contract on Little Drive?
Yes.
They're not going to define what it is.
Okay.
They're simply going to say it's a future school site. And then as needs change and budgeting becomes available, they'll make the decision at that point.
Thanks.
Item 15.
Make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in town. Thank you.